I'd like to call and order the Township of North Huntington Board of Commissioners meeting, special meeting for Thursday, June 14th, 2008, at 7:01. The order for all call.
Commissioner Harold.
Here.
Commissioner Britanni.
Here.
Commissioner Blasco.
Here.
Commissioner Martino.
Here.
Commissioner Bevan.
Here.
Commissioner Casera.
Here.
Commissioner Higas.
Here. Could everyone please stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All citizens would like to speak tonight. If you could please sign the book at the podium. Thank you. Okay. We have two citizens that would like to speak tonight. The first one is Ms. Carol Cutler. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Carol Cutler, 529 Brownstown Road, North Huntington. I appear before you one more time again as a volunteer for Fair Districts PA, a statewide, nonpartisan citizen group advocating redistricting reform in terms of a citizen, an independent citizen commission drawing the lines instead of the way it's been done. Just to give you a little context as far as my request for you to pass a resolution, I was kind of hoping you might be the first one in Westmoreland County, but Trafford Borough beat you to it. Statewide, over 270 communities, including 19 counties, have passed bipartisan resolutions or letters of recommendation for the reform, and that includes nine counties and covers over half of Pennsylvania's population. And what we're trying to demonstrate here is grassroots and local government support for this reform. Fran and I, and several other constituents visited our representative, who would be one of the prime persons that this resolution, if you were to pass it, would be presented to. And I think he's on board, but it isn't going to hurt for the largest municipality in his district to hear that there is support for this, for the legislation that would enact the citizen commission. So, one more time, I ask, please give all due consideration to placing this on the agenda. This bill has to get passed by the 6th of July, so time is running out for North Huntington Township to have its say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, residence Howard Huss Jr., just please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Howard Huss Jr. I live at 8571 Walnut Street, Westmoreland City, and I'm coming here tonight to see about having the police officers check Third Street in Westmoreland City a little better as far as parking. I know I've gotten a couple complaints on it. I know they're blocking fire hydrants and whatnot at times, so that's all. And I do have something coming up later, but if questions are needed.
Thank you. This time, we can take any response to citizens' input.
Yes, I would just like to say that we did meet with Georgia Dunbar, and there were several people from Fair Estates PA there, and he was very positive. As a matter of fact, I noticed he's a co-sponsor of Representative Reed's bill, so he's on board with this. And I think that if we have a, if we pass a resolution, it would just show that, yes, the citizens of Westmoreland County, many of us who were redistricted during the last special election and election, would prefer another method of congressional districts.
Any other board comment?
Yeah, I went over it now. I would have no problem with such a resolution.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that, too.
If you'd like, maybe we could add it to the agenda for next week.
Yeah, let's get it and act on it.
And then we can get the message back to the police department, maybe patrol Third Street out there in Westmoreland City, try to take care of some of that. Thank you. Moving on, work session discussion topics.
Okay, the first one before you is a request from the Westmoreland City Volunteer Fire Department for a fee waiver for zoning hearing board and planning and building permits. They are looking to repurpose their old Fireman's Club into a single vendor repair shop. Howard Huss is here today to answer any questions. I believe that this has been done in the past for our volunteer fire departments. The property is currently in R2 zone and they need to use variance to allow for the conversion.
No problem with that?
No problem.
Secondly, it's going to be a presentation with, on the Parks Comprehensive Plan Review and the Oak Hollow and Lyons Park Master Plan. I'll turn it over to Dan to kind of facilitate with Rich Rosso.
Thank you, Jeff. What you're going to see before you is a, is a plan that's been prepared by Rich Rosso. Let me back up just a step, if I may. You all may recall that back in March, we adopted a Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan that was prepared by Environmental Planning and Design. Once we had received that recommendation, we then contracted out with Rich Rosso, Landscape Architects, who's a consultant and has done this kind of work before, to basically give us a little bit more definition on EPD's recommendations. What Rich is going to provide you tonight is some highlights of a mutual understanding of the report, its context, its content, and its recommendations, with the hopes of continuing to move the ball forward, and that would be in the form of preparing master plans so that we can continue improving our park facilities. Myself, Mike Turley, our Assistant Manager, and Rich Rosso have met over the last eight weeks. We've been meeting weekly to basically comb through EPD's recommendations and get more definition on that. So with that said, I'd like to turn that over to Rich Rosso of Rich Rosso's Landscape Architects.
Thanks, Dan. What you have before you is really sort of a synthesis, as Dan had mentioned, of sort of the eight weeks that we reviewed the comprehensive plan. So I'll just briefly go through that, but you can see on the first page, well, after you get past the cover, is our goal, and our goal was to review the Comprehensive Parks Recreation Open Space Plan and provide a strategic report on prior, and again, these are the things that I wanted to stress, the priorities, the phasing, and the funding. So as Dan had mentioned, we went through the comp plan developed by Environmental Planning and Design, and what we really tried to do was then sort of dive down a little bit deeper into their recommendations and start to sort of prioritize those recommendations. So if you look on page three, what we did was, is we took those recommendations from Environmental Planning and Design, and we sort of divided them into high priority items, medium priority items, and low priority items. And so you see, starting on page three, what those priority items are. Also, within each priority item, we also broke it a little bit further down. Besides high, medium, and low priority, we also gave it a cost ranking. So you can see, you know, if it had a $1 sign, it was under $100,000 approximately, again, you know, as far as our estimates were concerned. $2 signs was about $100,000 to $250,000, and $3 signs was above $250,000. So you can see some of our high priority items, and I'll go through them rather briefly, and if you do have any questions, feel free to shout them out. First of our priority items was to prepare a master plan for Oak Hollow Park. We thought that, again, that was a high priority item. Another was to prepare the master plan for Lyons Park, same thing, high priority. And then the next thing done was develop parks trails. One of the things that was mentioned consistently throughout EPD's master plan was the recommendation, and based on the residents' comments, was everybody likes walking trails. It's a very popular thing to do. Obviously, if you're eight months old or 88 years old, you know, walking trails are certainly good, are certainly something that the people are asking for. So again, develop park trails, that seemed to, was a high priority item, and then some of the park and township-wide initiatives. Again, some, one of the big asks-for's was a dog park. Another one was really sort of a no-brainer, upgrading the restroom facilities, especially at the parks that contain ballfields that are heavily used. You know, that seemed to be obviously a big ask for. And then promote the use of parks and park amenities for wellness and fitness. So, and then also, there was a desire for programming, which really is not a big cost item, but as far as being able to use social media to promote programming and registration. So those were sort of the big, high priority items that we sort of synthesized from Environmental Planning and Design's report. And then there were some medium priority items. You can see on page four, as far as the potential for installing lighting for sports fields, focusing on cultural and historical elements within the township. One of the other things that was sort of interesting, and we sort of kicked this around a little bit, was providing water access to the Yawkey Gany River. That was an ask for, but also in addition to that, it wasn't a big ask for, but we thought that would be something sort of unique that the township could provide. And then next is park and park township-wide initiatives, the potential for developing more, more fields, finding additional private property that could be developed into sports fields, and then evaluating waste, wave finding and signage, and last but not least, enhancing landscaping in the parks. And then we will go, then there were some low priority items, feasibility study for an indoor rec center, and then also feasibility study for a swimming pool. So what we did then is, and I won't go through the rest of them, but you see we have the sort of high, medium, and low priorities. And then if you look on page six, this is where we sort of get down to the dollars and cents. What we tried to do was, is we tried to take our high priority items and then our medium priority items and try to figure out what year these potentially could happen, and then, and then potential costs. So you can see, as far as 2018, one of our recommendations obviously would be to fund the master plan for both Oak Hollow and Lyons Park Master Plan. So those would potentially be accomplished in 2018. And then what we started to do within is, once we got the master plans accomplished, then we started to kind of whittle away at sort of the big asks-for's. And you can see in 2019, potentially, we would be able to do some trail work and provide some funding for that. Then in 2020 Lyons Park Development, 2021 Oak Hollow Park Development, and then in 2022, some more athletic fields, restrooms, dog parks, so on and so forth. So you can see, budget year, we made some assumptions on what were sort of the high priority items and what year they could potentially happen in. Then if you look, we also assigned some costs there, and you can see, we tried to be sort of conservative. We were going to apply for grants through the DCNR Growing Greener Fund, but we didn't, we made the assumption that that wouldn't necessarily happen every year, that the parks wouldn't be funded. So we tried to be sort of conservative on that. And then you can see, then we took, we went a little bit farther down and addressed some of the medium priority items, and you can see, we just sort of ranked them one through seven. And we didn't necessarily assign a year for them, but we assigned costs for them. And again, we were kind of conservative in the amount of funding we would have. So essentially, what we come down to is, is we had a grant total of about $3 million. We assumed that DCNR would potentially be able to grant the township about $1.1 million, and then that the township would have to come up with about $2 million over potentially a 10-year program, or 10-year period, excuse me. So that's kind of in a nutshell, you know, obviously, without having a crystal ball, we did our best shot at trying to prioritize them and assign costs. And so anyhow, that's what we have done. That's what we did over the past eight weeks on the Fridays. We had some fun doing it, had some lively discussions. So with that in mind, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Rich, if I could add something?
Sure.
The DCNR grant money can't be obtained without a master plan, so it's very important to do the, really, the design part of it. We've been doing, we're transitioning from planning to design right now, is what we're doing. So this is really high priority, the two master plans. When we cut, when we, when we cut through this, we really wanted to see how, what this was going to cost and how we were going to pay for it. So you may want to ponder this, but you, there's some decisions to be made. So the $1 million is an assumption. Some years, we get grants, some years, we don't, like Rich said. So we just fill in in other years with fee and loan money and township funding. There's options how to do this, but I think it's important to note that two, in 10 years, if you decide you want to do this, if you want to do more than this, then it's more money. If you want to do it faster than 10 years, then it's more money, too. But this was just a base to work from, so it's $2 million. And if you do simple math, 10 years, it's $200,000 or so a year, on average, some years more, maybe some less. So this is what we tried to get to, is to get to you something that showed what a really, a good plan, a timeframe, and what it would cost, and then we'll figure out how we're going to, how we're going to pay for it.
Another thing I wanted to add, thanks, Mike. One of the things that I didn't explain very well, I guess, was that, you know, as far as the DCNR funding was concerned, make sure everybody's aware of that. What they do is they do match dollar for dollar. So every dollar that the township puts in, DCNR would match it dollar for dollar. So that's sort of, that's how that works.
Just one, before we get open up, you know, as Mike and Dan did the yeoman's work on the fund stuff of deciding what we'd like to see, then they handed it off to me and said, "Well, okay, come up with a funding strategy." And before we, you know, $3 million is a big number, but don't choke on it, because probably around October, I'll come up with a matrix strategy for you to take a look at on different options and how to address this, to probably try to minimize, you know, impacted daily operational funds, knowing that we want to improve the parks, but at the same time, we do have to maintain our base level services and, you know, still keep, you know, going forward in the other areas. So you will see some options. It's just not, we're after our numbers. They tell us how to spend it. We will give you some options coming out in the fall and how we could address this issue.
And that, excuse me, that will also be done with the recommendations of a master park plan. We'll probably have a little bit better, we'll be able to judge better our cost, once we have a master plan in place.
Mr. Miller, I'd like to thank you for following up on that AED email with me. If you guys don't know, there was a defibrillator vandalized at Indian Lake Park, and hopefully that will be, is that replaced at this point in time?
No, but it is replaceable, and it's in the, it's in the works.
Well, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
My concern is the cost of these feasibility studies, and I'm all for the development of our parks and recreation programs. I'm not sure if any of the board members here have ever been to Lyons Park or can actually drive to it right now, if you got in their cars right now. To potentially put $18,000 into doing a feasibility study on Lyons Park, I don't even know how utilized that park has been. I mean, I think it's more of a common sense approach, is that we can make that a dog park. I mean, it looks to be almost as if it's previously been designed as a detention pond. I mean, it's a flooding disaster. Went down there yesterday to check it out, and our public works department cut the grass there, and unfortunately, we had had a substantial amount of rain, but they almost destroyed the grass there. The idea of potentially getting these grants is wonderful, but are we investing $20,000 for a park that's grossly underutilized and, you know, maybe part, again, establishing a partnership, looking for community businesses and organizations, looking for pet land in Norrington Square, saying, "Hey, do you guys want to spot $5,000 and put a name on this dog park?" I can't see spending the township's dollars for a park that I don't think most of the township even knows exists. I love using the township parks. Do we have any number uses or estimates of what the Lyons Park gets by any time throughout the year? Any ballpark ideas? I know there's no easy way to measure that.
You're right, Commissioner Brian. There is no easy way to measure that. I could tell you the number of people that use the pavilion down there, come up with a prorated number of how many people are using it based on pavilion reservations, et cetera. So no, I don't have that answer for you today. I could probably dig a little deeper and get that answer for you. But I do think that it's fair that even, and I'm a big proponent of the dog park. I think a dog park makes sense in this township. It has been highly requested. To me, that's been a vision I've had for several years, and I think is a great place for a dog park. So even if it does move in that direction, we would still need a master plan to prepare for that dog park.
My question to you, what would be the most economical approach to getting that? What's the cheapest we can make this plan whilst, I think it's really a common sense approach that, between the board commissioners, the township administration, that do we need to spend $18,000, or can we could do the proposal to get grants with $8,000? And I agree, that would be a great location for the park. Again, I just think, if we don't get that grant money, are we pouring money down the drain? So that's just my thoughts.
Commissioner, if I could just maybe dovetail a little bit. Unfortunately, the state does not like to fund bricks and mortar without us spending for soft costs. There's really no way, I think the $18,000 is, you know, we'd well be pretty good to get down to that number. And unfortunately, we can't move forward without master plans. That's, on any, on any project, we're going to go for state or federal funding, they're going to want to see a master plan by a third party, delving into the details of why do you want to spend money? You know, it could be common sense, but if the ones that come with a consultant and put it into a master plan, you know, the reviewers don't want to see it. I would prefer to put it into bricks and mortar myself. However, you know, I do recommend that we do the master plans, because one is, we have an underutilized park in Lyons, simply because it's a stormwater, you know, management tool, because it hasn't been developed yet. So I think we want to see how we can best develop it to get more people in, to get the adequate parking, to get, to get the use. So I understand your trepidation of spending, you know, $18,000 to tell us how we can spend $200,000, but unfortunately, it's the bureaucratic process that we're kind of shoehorned into if we want to access any funding outside ours.
Okay.
Manager Shepherd, if I may, or, excuse me, Manager Silkett, if I may, also say that the money currently is budgeted for 2018. Forgive me, Jeff. The money is budgeted for 2018, so the money is there for us to conduct that survey. I would say if we're into budgetary time, if we're in August and September, we're thinking about, do we want to put that $18,000, we may want to, you know, revisit that based on your comments. But currently, the money is there and budgeted for the 2018 year.
Thank you.
And if you'd like me adding to, Dan, thanks. One of the things that, that DCNR does is, is they have sort of a laundry list of all the different tasks you have to do to provide for a master plan. So even if the park is 10 acres or 10,000 acres, you still have to do each one of those tasks. Obviously, you know, for a bigger park, it takes a lot longer because there's a lot, you know, there's a lot more to study, but they do give you sort of a laundry list that you have to, that you, sort of a minimum you have to provide based on the master plan and then the report. So they do ask for, it looks like, items A through M, no matter what size the park is.
I'd like to add, we talked quite a bit about Lyons Park in our work meetings, some of the things that you brought up, too, but it, it's in a good location. We felt like it was in a really good location, and there is a little more land there than what you think. A lot of it's wooded, and it lends itself well to some trails and some things of that nature, and it is underutilized. There's some issues. There's parking issues. There's a bridge that needs redone. There's some issues, and we recognize that. But when we did a stormwater facility, we took a few facilities out, but we never intended it to just be a stormwater facility. We always envisioned it as to be still a park and combined stormwater facility. So when we look at this, we believe there are ways to use, but now granted, it's wet, like this time of year, and, you know, whatever we put in there would be compatible with its stormwater usage, too. So we're looking to try to better utilize it more than just a storm facility. So we felt like, for those reasons, this might be a good park to master plan, notwithstanding the various limitations and so forth. And that's what we got our attention with. It was a really good location, and we could, it could be better utilized. We'll have to put some money into it. Otherwise, it won't probably be much more than what it is right now.
Dan, how much, does Lyons, or Jacktown Acres Park, does that flood on a regular basis, or hold water?
It holds water. I wouldn't say that it floods. There is a stream behind it with a bank that keeps that water back, but, but it does hold water, too. All parks are in floodplains, low-level areas.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So I have.
I'm asking for an invitation to put this on the agenda for our board consideration.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'll go with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Rich.
Okay, my final item is the Associate Planning Director job description that I have. In going through the job descriptions and kind of getting administratively settled, I realized that although we've had an Associate Planning Director for some time, we've never had a job description for the person. They're still working on the community planner or whatever job description they were hired under, but it was never put down in writing and made up for the Associate Planning Director. So, you know, we're working with Andy and Ryan. We did put together this job description that I have for you that fairly and accurately depicts the general working conditions and expectations of the Associate Planning Director. And what I'd like to do, you know, pending any board comments, is to put this on the agenda for consideration by the board.
Thought the draft looked good. Appreciate it.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. And that's the end of my topics.
All right. Moving on to the plan and engineering topics. Mr. Blinko?
There are two items on the agenda tonight. The first one is the Sikoski Lot Consolidation, and these are a series of four lots, side by side, on Virginia Avenue in Ardera, and the owner would like to consolidate those four lots into one. I just found a math error in the plan. It, my memo, you said the total lot will be .204 acres. It'll be .404 acres, so we're going to have to get that fixed on the recorded plan here. But Planning Commission recommends approval of that. Without that, the lots are maybe a tenth of an acre apiece, which is much less than would even be permitted under today's ordinance. There's a little close-up to show you what's going on. No questions? Okay, the next item is full circle property management, or better known to you as above and beyond handyman services. This is a development that has taken place on the lot that used to be Wiggles and Giggles Daycare or preschool that was down by Hartford Heights Fire Hall. That building burned down two years ago, and it was purchased by a gentleman who had been renting just a little up the road from the old Pedro Chiropractic Building. And we met back in August of last year. I explained the process. Somewhere, there was a miscommunication. He came in and got a building permit without a site plan approval. And he proceeded to erect this prefab office trailer, which is permitted. We cannot prohibit those under the building code. But the biggest problem is, it sits only about 42 feet from the right-of-way line, whereas our commercial district requires a 50-foot setback. His problem is, this is temporary, and he wants to build a permanent building. If he puts this building on the footprint or the foundation of the old preschool, then he has to move it at some point so he can build his building on the footprint of that old building. So he built it in front of that. As I say, it does not meet the 50-foot setback, but he has presented a plan that shows that his permanent building would be on the footprint of the former daycare. And he's proposing to clean up a lot of the storage and materials that he has in the back. Those will eventually be under roof, but for right now, he got out of his old place and moved. and moved just a hodgepodge of, a couple of storage containers and old trailers and so forth back there. So, the Planning Commission is certainly in favor of what he wants to do. He has agreed to address all of the engineering comments by the end of August with the long-term plan of erecting a permanent building on that footprint within the next two to three years. The Planning Commission thought that was, they didn't want to drive him out of business, but they thought that seemed like a reasonable timeframe. So, they agreed that that made sense and crafted a resol, not a resolution, but a motion to make this a preliminary approval, not a final approval. But then he would come in with his final building elevation views and so forth, within the five years that's permitted by the MPC for a site plan, and if we don't get that in five years, his approval goes away, which seems like a reasonable way to bring the site into compliance. So, the Planning Commission does recommend approval of that. There is a long-term plan that's going to make this site in compliance, and his concern is, and I thought he might be here tonight, but he doesn't want to spend $5,000 or $6,000 moving a building onto the old footprint, or me to move it off the old footprint to build a new building. He said that $10,000 or $12,000 would be better spent in the bank so that he could start working on this new building sooner rather than later.
So, this is going to be preliminary site plan?
Correct.
Okay, well, let's make sure I see it, your proposed site plan. Let's just say preliminary site plan. It's bad to work preliminary in there.
And he's going to, excuse me, please. All right, the resolution that I've been working on does say that.
Okay. Okay. Andy, he will meet the 50-foot setback in required?
Yes, yes. The old building did meet it. As I say, the problem was, he wanted to preserve that footprint for his permanent building, so he put it in front of it.
So, he won't need a variance or anything like that?
That's correct. Any other questions?
Yeah, Andy, in the meantime, on this letter that you sent to the manager, it says about the tent is not an allowable building. Is he going to be removing that in the meantime?
Yes, yes. That will be going by August.
Okay.
So, there seems to be some attempt to try to come into compliance?
Yes. That'll do it.
All right, thank you. Any further board comments?
Motion adjourned.
Just need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, meeting adjourned, 7:34.